All right, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the city council. Today is Monday, November 13th, 2017. Ms. Marion Mann, if I can kindly have you step up to the podium, please? And if we would kindly all stand, and Ms. Marion Mann, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Mann. Okay, may I have a roll call, please? Okay, that comes later. Yes, ma'am. Roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Gingona?
President.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item on the agenda is presentation. We have the Seal of Sustainability Awards, and if I can kindly have Mr. Stephen Salti come -- hi, Mr. Salti, how are you?
Good, how are you?
All right. Mr. Salti is our sustainability coordinator, and along with Ms. Monica Devoncensi?
Devoncensi.
Devoncensi, got it. She's the -- good evening, Monica, the Municipal Relations Manager for Republic Services, and I'll gladly turn it over to you both.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
So, little caveat, we gave out the awards out in the rotunda because the kids really had to get home, and it was getting late, and they got homework.
Oh, okay, so next time, I won't come in early and sign them, then make them wait, because I went -- no, it's okay.
We heard the cheering in the class. It was marvelous.
Yeah, they were excited. But we can do a little edited version and let you know what we did out there.
Yes, please.
Okay, so, and I also promised that all the photos will be on Facebook tomorrow, so you'll get to see all the happy people with their awards. Background on this is that in February of last year, the city, in partnership with our ways taller Republic Services, we rolled out curbside collection of organic waste. And now we're two years into it, and we really wanted to recognize the businesses and the organizations that really ran with it and excelled in their composting programs. A lot of them were schools, actually, which is -- that's so great to see them leading by example and taking charge. The really important thing about organics is that they shouldn't end up in the landfill. Our goal is to divert organic waste from the landfill, so it doesn't end up buried underground with all the other trash and then becomes a source of methane emissions that contribute to climate change. Organic waste can be recycled and turned into, by Republic at their facility, into compost, which is very nutrient-rich, you can use it in your garden, farms in the region can use it, and we actually give it away for free at our recycling events at City Hall twice a year, and people scoop it up really quickly. So it's -- and it's made from food scraps, food-soiled paper products, and yard trimmings right here in Daly City. So all of the groups that we recognized worked really closely with the recycling coordinators at Republic, and they're in the audience in the back row. They enrolled these organizations, they trained them, and it just really went to show, you know, how good that relationship is because these schools and businesses really excel. So with that, I'll pass it off to Monica, and she can tell a little bit about the Seal of Sustainability.
Thank you, Stephen. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Members of the council, we apologize that they had to leave, but we do thank you very much for signing the certificates. So we had 25 awardees tonight, a good bunch of them that were schools, and they each received a certificate recognizing them as the 2017 Seal of Sustainability Award. They also receive a window of ecal so they can display it in their place of business or at the school office and everything else, letting everybody else know that they're the first actual recipients of our awards. This is the first year that we're doing them in partnership with the city of Daly City. We're very excited, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to do so. Since this was the first year that we were doing it, we want -- we not only looked at what they had done in the past year since the new services had started, but also historically what they had done. And the 25 that we recognize are kind of the pioneers of our programs and services before they officially became our programs with the start of the new contract. Together, I have some statistics which I was very excited about. These 25 schools and businesses, in the past year alone, recycled and composted nearly 20,000 pounds of material over the past year, resulting in the savings of roughly 50 metric tons of CO2 emissions, which that is the equivalent, since Stephen, through his tree planting program, is very involved with the city, that's the equivalent of planting and maintaining roughly 1,000 tree seedlings for 10 years, and then taking or removing 10 passenger vehicles off the road each year. And that's just 25 of the businesses in Daly City. So we're very excited about the program, and this is something that we'll do annually and recognize them for their efforts. So with that, I'd like to say thank you again.
Monica, please, hold on for a second.
Sure.
I think for the folks at home, they should know who the 25 were, so would you kindly make that announcement, please?
Absolutely. So we had quite a few from the Jefferson Elementary School District. They were Daniel Webster Elementary, Fernando Rivera Intermediate, Franklin D. Roosevelt Middle School, General Pershing Preschool, John F. Kennedy Elementary, Margaret Brown Elementary, Tobias Elementary, Susan B. Anthony Elementary, Polosita Middle School, Washington Elementary, Woodrow Wilson Elementary, and Westlake Elementary. Outside of the Jefferson Elementary School District, we had the Bay Shore School, Hilldale School, Hope Lutheran Day School, and Jefferson High School. The really loud cheering you heard was Jefferson High School. As far as nonprofits, we had two. We had the Dooldr Senior Center Cafe in Delhi, which Joseph received the -- accepted the certificate for, and the Lawson Hall Food Distribution Program. As far as businesses, we had 99 Ranch Market, Celia's Mexican Restaurant, Coy Palace Demsum, Moonstar Buffet, Original Joe's of Westlake, Outback Steakhouse, and Chelox Restaurant.
That is outstanding, and this would not have been possible if not for Republic and Mr. Stephen Salti, who, your community outreach is to definitely be commended. You know, when I come for that recycling and I see that compost there, I was wondering, I thought Daly City bought that, but you -- that was as a result of recycling, huh? Shows you how much I know. People would just go crazy over that stuff.
We call it black gold.
All right. Is any other comments from any of my colleagues? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I think that's just tremendous, and I just want to thank you both for inspiring the younger generation to hear so many elementary schools understanding how important it is to save our planet is phenomenal. And -- because I could think back when, I always wondered why we didn't have a compost bin back in 2012, and now we do, and to see the younger generation understand how important it is is huge, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to remind people that when you go into these businesses where the winner, you know, give them a thumbs up or a congratulations, or, you know, we want to encourage them to continue and even enhance their programs, so.
And we'll be featuring them in our newsletter and website and things like that, so people know which ones to definitely give that thumbs up to.
All right.
Right, and I also see your coworkers here in the audience, thank you so much for coming out and for showing your support for the program. Thank you, it's always good to see you folks. Thank you very much. All right. All right, moving on to the next item, it's the -- I am requesting approval of the minute.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? The minutes approved. Next item is the approval of the agenda for this -- oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I abstain.
For the -- thank you, Madam Christensen. Okay, and aye as well. Minutes have been approved. Next is the approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye?
Aye.
Aye. It is approved. Next item is the consent agenda, and I'll entertain a motion to either pull any item or to approve the entire consent agenda.
I would like to pull number four, and number one, just for a quick question.
Okay, number four and one, any other items to be pulled? Okay, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of items number one and four.
So moved.
Second.
First and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. By the way, if there's any audience member who would like to speak on any matter, please submit a card and bring -- send it up to us. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Christensen, item number one, adopting and amending recurrent and part-time hourly rates. You have a question?
I just have a question. Part of our package was a chart of a whole bunch of positions, and yet the report says that the changes were made to bring our lowest-paid workers up to the California minimum wage of $11 an hour. My question is, on that chart, were any other changes made?
There were. I'm Shawna Malp, the Director of Human Resources, and I'm -- both of my items just got pulled, so I'm feeling like I'm going to stand up here for a little while.
Ooh, you're special.
But, so yes, we, even though the Department of Industrial Relations only requires us to move up to those positions that were under 11, because the salary schedules were implemented years and years ago, when we need to sort of deal with compaction and sort of market issues, so if we were only to address the classifications that were not at minimum, then the ones above them would be behind market. And we actually ran into that the last go-around where we adjusted the classifications, because over the years, we hadn't addressed the classifications that were below or above the market, and several of them were behind. So we decided by policy that when the Industrial Relations Department requires us to move up our minimum wage, that we would adjust the others accordingly.
So I understand that people at the 101 level are at the low end of the pay scale, and that those salaries or hourly rates increased, but what about the people making $39.33 an hour? Did theirs -- that's at the bottom. That's range 112. Is there -- did theirs also increase?
Theirs did, and I have the privilege of looking at the last go-around, so for instance, with range H112, so in 2017, this year, their top step was 4563, and so based on this new salary schedule, it would be 4780. And this is just a formula that finance uses to deal with salary ranges so that it's comparable per range.
I have a request in the future?
Sure.
That you include the old salary range with the new one?
Absolutely.
So that people can make that comparison and see if it's a significant change or if it's just a minor adjustment. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions on item number one from my colleagues?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen, for your suggestion, and shall we do the approval of both, or you want to do them singly? We'll do them both since they're both -- your item, Ms. Malp. Okay, item?
You might want to do them separately.
All right, sounds good. Well, all right. So, on item number one, with the recommendation, any further recommendations or comments? All those in favor of approving?
We can do a roll call on this.
Roll call? Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Okay, item number one, under the consent agenda has been approved. We'll move on to the next item that was requested to be pulled, and this, item number four. Ms. Christensen?
I'm going to ask our finance director to also -- I have some questions for him. First of all, this is a vote to approve memorandums of understanding and salary schedules between the city of Daly City and specific employee organizations. That includes a 3% increase this year and a 3% increase next year. So over two years, these employees are getting a 6% raise. They're also getting some additional benefits, but that's the major thing. So my question is, how much of the increase in dollars will come out of our reserves? How much will remain in our reserves if this is approved tonight? And what is the percentage of our reserves remaining compared to what we have authorized as an appropriate fiscally responsible amount? And then my last question is, how many days of maintaining city services would this amount left in our reserves provide? The last time I asked that question, I was told that we had enough money in our reserves to last a month. It's significantly lower now, so.
So this is a two-year contract?
Yes.
The first year, the fiscal year 2018, fiscal impact will be approximately $300,000. And for the next fiscal year, fiscal year 19, it will be around $700,000. So now we look at the projected general fund reserve, and based on the fiscal year mid-year update, the projected general fund reserve will be reduced to 10.3 million or 12.8% of the general fund reserve, and the council reserve policy is a 15%.
Oh, excuse me, how -- what percentage?
It's a 12.8% of the general fund reserve, and the council reserve policy is a 15%. So we are below the council reserve policy.
Okay.
So for the fiscal year 2018, that is equivalent to around 45 days of operating expense. So for fiscal year 2019, the projected general fund reserve will be around 3.1 million. That will be equivalent to around 15 days of operating expense.
15 days. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, is any other comments from my colleagues?
I have some comments.
Okay.
I know everybody loves raises when they get them, but my concern is now is not the time for 6% raises. The reserve fund is not extra money, it's there for an emergency. For example, if we have a major earthquake, or a mudslide, or there's flooding. If we only have enough emergency funds to keep the city running for 15 days, we are one major crisis away from a bankruptcy and a potential state takeover. Right now, every major economist in the world is saying, is predicting that we are overdue for another recession, and they say it's coming soon. Daly City is usually the first area, certainly in the surrounding area, hit with a recession, and we are the last ones to come out of it. And then what has the state, when they come in and take over, what have they done in some cities? They have taken back wage increases, they have moved police departments to the county sheriff, they've moved the fire department to Cal Fire, they've lowered retirement benefits. So my concern is, we need to be fiscally responsible, and having a 6% raise when we have such low reserves is basically gambling with our future. Maybe some of you are gamblers, I tend to err on the side of let's be fiscally conservative, let's make sure that we protect ourselves and that we protect our employees. They may want that raise now, but if they end up with major cutbacks in terms of employees and major cuts to other things, moving them to other agencies, that's not the right thing to do. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. Any other comments? So on the item number four, I'll entertain a motion to accept item number four in the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a first.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
I have to vote no, to protect our future.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Thank you very much. That is the end. Ms. Malp and Mr. Lawrence, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, both of you.
That is the end of our consent agenda. The next item on the agenda is number 19, which is considering new fees for the Daly City Youth Recreation Basketball League, and we have staff, Mr. Curran. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. The way the agenda flowing is perfect, because the reason we are seeking an increase in the basketball team fees is because our costs are going up, and we're slipping a little behind. We try to achieve some cost recovery in this program, it's still heavily subsidized by the city of Daly City, but wanted to bring this to your attention today, and we are seeking your approval of team fee increases for the Daly City Youth Basketball League. Currently, the individual registration fee is $105, and it's $131 for non-residents, and then the school team registration fee is $331 for Daly City schools and $415 for non-Daly City schools. We're seeking to increase the team registration fees from $331 to $430. And we're also looking, we, in addition to the team fees, we do have a practice fee that's optional. Some schools prefer to practice at their own place, but some schools like Or Lady of Mercy, for example, it doesn't have a gym, prefer to practice at one of our facilities. So that extra fee is going up from $110 to $150. And for those following at home, we anticipate our direct expenses related to the league this year will be about $112,000, $113,000, and with the proposed fee increases, we will capture about $63,000 of those costs. That's in it a nutshell. I could go into more detail if you want, or answer any questions the mayor and council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Curran. Do we have any questions of Mr. Curran?
When was the last time the fee was increased?
About five years ago.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I think there's just a word missing here. When you're talking about the 90-minute practice periods per week?
Yes.
It's for Daly -- each Daly City team?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Again, that's optional, they don't -- if they practice at their school gym, they don't have to pay that fee.
Right, great, thank you.
Okay, any other further questions? I'd like to open it up to public hearings. I have no cards on this particular topic at this time, so subsequently request a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
First.
Second.
Second. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution, and may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
First and second. Any further discussion? May I have a roll call?
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Okay, the resolution has passed, thank you very much, Mr. Curran. Next item is 20, is regarding award of bids and contract. Item 20 is to allocate additional funds totaling $35,000 and award a construction contract for Fire Station 95 roof replacement project, and Mr.?
Mr. Chu.
Chu, thank you. You have the floor, sir.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I will be presenting the next two items. The first item is the allocation of funds totaling $35,000 and award of contract for the Fire Station 95 roof replacement project. The existing roof at Fire Station 95 is more than 20 years old. The roofing material, the shingles, the flashing, the wood fascia is showing signs of deterioration, and the -- there has been some water penetration, so there has been some damage in regards to the sheeting underneath it. City staff, along with the city's roofing consultant, solicited bids to re-roof Fire Station 95. We did receive three bids, ranging from $97,800 to $153,000. The lowest responsible bidder is Pioneer Contractors with a bid amount of $97,800. Staff is requesting an additional $35,000 be appropriated from the Civic Center Fund to add on top of the $75,000 that was originally estimated in the 2017-18 capital improvement Staff is recommending that the additional appropriations be made and that the contract be awarded to Pioneer Contractors in the amount of $97,800 for the project. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a first and second. Any discussion? Recommendation is to accept the resolution. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Resolution passes. Item number 21, Mr. Chu, this is for the award of construction contract for the 2017 traffic signal painting project.
Correct, thank you. This project is for the painting of our traffic signals. The city had a program to paint our traffic signals every five years. However, due to economic downturn and the budget constraints, we do have many intersections that have not been painted for the last 10 years. It's important to paint our traffic signals due to the salty air environment that we're in. This proposed project is scheduled to paint 10 intersections and 20 streetlights along School Street. The city did receive two bids. The low bidder was E. Rosakis Restoration with a base bid amount of $55,650 and a total with base plus alternates of $87,300. E. Rosakis Restoration, they're out of Folsom, they did do work for the city in our 2015 program. The total estimated cost for the project is $110,000. That includes $87,300 for the contractor, and includes some costs for contingency, as well as construction inspection and contract administration. Staff is recommending that the city council accept all bids and award a construction contract to E. Rosakis Restoration of Folsom in the amount of $87,300, and authorize the city manager to execute contracts on behalf of the city. Staff further recommends that the city confirm the sequel determination of categorical exemption. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. Any questions of Mr. Chu? Any questions of Mr. Chu?
I just have a question about the kind of paint. Is the paint they're using specifically designed for metal and ocean?
It is, and it's been successful in the past in regards to extending the useful life of our signals and at the intersections.
Great, because I have noticed a lot of the signals, actually, I drive that street frequently, are a little ragged looking. Things are peeling off and stuff, yeah.
Yes, and that's because some of the intersections haven't been painted for many years. We're trying to get back onto that program.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chu, I was looking, at least we went out for a bid, because when I first saw this, that's a lot of money to be painting some lights. And what if they show signs of rust? I guess they try to mitigate, maybe sand it down and prime and paint it?
That is correct.
That's all part of it.
That's correct. And for this particular project, we actually got some very good bids. It's uncommon at this environment right now, but this bid actually came in less than the government estimate, which is very unusual.
Yeah.
And the engineer's estimate is the government estimate, the ninety-two?
That's correct.
Wow, good job.
Yeah.
All right, Xania, further questions for Mr. Chu? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
We have a first.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chu.
Thank you.
All right. At this particular time, I'm going to open it up for public appearances. And we have four, it looks like four cards. I'd like to start off by calling up Ms. Marion Mann. Good evening, Ms. Mann.
Good evening, Mayor and council people. Today is November thirteenth, which means that Christmas is in about six weeks. So the homeowners associations will be receiving their letters within two weeks notifying them of the 25th Holiday Decoration Contest. Republic has very generously offered to sponsor it, but I want to tell the people on television that be prepared to win. We have eighteen homeowners associations, and I'm hoping we'll have at least fifteen this year. So they'll be getting their letters. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mann. All right, next item, the next person to speak will be Pamela De Giovanni, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Marie Breswell is unable to be with us tonight, but her, myself, and others wanted to thank the Mayor, Vice Mayor coming out for the Policita School Opening. It was a pretty uplifting day, as you guys can imagine. And also, I want to give a big thanks to our police and fire because Chief Martinez happened to be out of town. He responded to my email like rapid. And Captain Hensley and Captain Gamaz, they were able to get to our police officers who gladly came, not just Luke and a new officer from Oakland, but I believe it was Sergeant Meadows and some others. And actually, you have to turn around, and Engine 91 came with their fire engine. And it was a, as you guys knew, a community event. So like I said, Marie was unable to come tonight, but wanted to send the best wishes on behalf of the Jefferson Elementary School District and myself and others that were there, the members of the community. And this will just be the beginning. Hopefully, there'll be more schools in the future, and the support of public schools is clear from this council. So that's really nice to hear. It's very heartwarming. So thank you very much, and thank you to our police and fire for being part of our great community. They really support us. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Thank you very much. I really enjoyed being there, and it was a lovely event. Thank you so much. All right, the next card I have is Jennifer Rocha?
Yes.
Rocha?
Yes.
And Samuel Merritt University, and you're going to be speaking on Rent Control?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Jennifer Rocha, and I'm a nursing student at Samuel Merritt University about to finish and a resident of Daily City. Renting homes has been a source of stress and anxiety for many residents throughout the Bay Area. The great influx of people looking for jobs has increased rents significantly in the past few years. The median household income for Daily City is 79,000, and rent is usually about 2,400 a month. This makes up 37% of their paycheck monthly. To make matters worse, many households like mine make even less, exacerbating this issue further. Summarizing income increases are not being able to keep up with the rent increases. An ability to afford rent has driven people to rent homes and homes and overcrowd their own places, which leads to other health risks. Overcrowding leads to transmission outbreak of diseases due to an increased concentration of germs. The stress of being able to make a decent living with the addition of overcrowded conditions are putting our residents at risk and our community. I urge everyone to think about the many lives living in fear of not being able to afford a place to live and of those living in inhuman conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rocha.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next person, we have a Fritzi Oriente, Samuel Merritt University, and this is on workplace bullying.
Yes.
Thank you so much for coming in this evening, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Fritzi Oriente. I'm a senior BSN student at Samuel Merritt University, and I'm preparing for graduation next month. I just want to express my gratitude for City Council for signing the recent proclamation of Stop Workplace Bullying Week. In nursing, there's a phenomenon called Nurses Eat Their Young that has been around for about thirty years. This is the act of bullying of newer nurses by more experienced nurses. And during the past two years of nursing school, I've heard stories and warnings about this phrase in classrooms and clinicals, and I've experienced it myself. And the reported reasons for this specific workplace bullying would be that it's considered a rite of passage or the norm against new nurses. And the Journal of Nursing Education and Practice reports 30% of nurses that face workplace bullying with incidents being highest amongst newer nurses. Considering the kind and caring nature that nurses provide for their patients, it's unfortunate that we don't always provide the same nature to one another. I'll be entering this workforce soon, and I'm hopeful that Freedom from Workplace Bullying Week will be a great step forward in creating awareness and inciting change in all workplaces and in turn allow us to become a more united and productive community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Fritzi Oriente. Apparently, I'm proud of council, and thank you for bringing that back to our attention of us signing that proclamation. I'm definitely proud and even more proud of you to remind us and to validate how very important it is to stop workplace bullying. Thank you so much. All right. I have no further cards, so we're going to close the public appearances and oral communications. Next item is appointments. Do we have any board or commission membership appointments? Hearing none, we're going to move on to reports. Next item is council committee.
And I believe that's my committee.
That's yours, Madam Christensen. Okay.
Yes. I'm reporting on a council committee that Mr. Gangona and myself participated in at a new building site over in the Bay Shore. A lot of us remember Robertson Middle School. Well, the middle school's been torn down, and the money from the people who bought that land went into building the new Bay Shore School, which is just a glory. You need to go see it. It's a beautiful school. And what's happening on this land now is that the Toll Brothers are going to build seventy-one homes. They are in the million-dollar-plus category. They are three- and four-story homes with four or five bedrooms. But here's the interesting part. Most developers build houses that pretty much look all alike. You can drive along, and you go, ooh, that's a development. They've got three houses, and they're pink, blue, and green. Well, not the way with this one. They have four floor plans based on whether you're on flatland or you're on a hill that tips away from the house or the front of the house is down. So you've got two different kinds of hills, and so you've got four plans that deal with the contour of the land and that maximize the views. They also have three distinct architectural styles. So depending on whatever floor plan you choose, you can get it done in three different architectural plans and twelve different color schemes. So when you drive down the street, you are not going to see cookie cutter houses. And they put as a, the planning department put in as a condition of approval, the fact that you cannot have two houses next door to each other with the same look. Because they really want to create that sense of a neighborhood rather than just a development. They want it more individualized. One of the things that council member Gangona and myself requested being changed to that is when you have a row of houses, the ones on the end that are on a corner have a front side that's visible to the public, and they have a side view. We said you need to enhance the architectural detail on those end houses with the side view. Otherwise, the houses are just, you know, six feet apart, so there's no need to have architectural detail in there. No one's really going to see it except when they're hauling their trash cans out. So they were very amenable to that. And I think it's going to be a beautiful thing, nothing I could ever afford, but thinking about how that project really has contributed to that community with that beautiful school. So I just wanted to update you on that, and we're going to see some beautiful houses up there very soon.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. I actually have a question on this particular project.
Yeah.
You made mention one million dollars.
Yeah.
Probably one million and up.
Yeah.
Is there an in lieu fee or are they going to set aside a certain amount for below-market rate affordability?
This decision was, has already been made. That was the, okay, here was the deal. We have the 20% inclusionary housing ordinance. The property owners, which was the Bay Shore School District, said, we need to market this land at the highest possible amount, dollar amount, so we can use that money to fund the school, because we don't have enough money to build that school. So a deal was worked out with San Mateo County, who owns property directly across the street from this project. And the Bay Shore School District also owned some of that property. So the Bay Shore School District said, we are going to give the county this land. They are going to build affordable housing on it because there's a big renovation and an increase in housing at the Midway Village. And so that's how that process all worked out. The affordable housing will be built directly across the street. And I know that that varies from our original intent, which is to have affordable housing mixed in with market-rate housing, but the need for the school district to have that money to redo that public school came in as a higher priority. And the fact that the houses are going to be built, and they're very close just across the street. Does that answer your question?
Madam Christensen, it sure does. My concern is, you know, a million plus with affordable housing across the street, and hopefully, being in close proximity, a term won't come out where that's the nicer side and that's the other side. I'm looking for the togetherness of the community.
Well, some of the, some of the uses of the libraries that are very close and the community center, which is very close there, all that stuff is just within walking distance of both areas.
Excellent.
And hopefully, these two communities will be welcoming of each other. And I think maybe we can play a role in that.
Thank you so much.
Having some activities that would bring those two groups of people together.
All right. Thank you. Great report. Is there any other further questions for Ms. Christensen on this matter? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the next item. Oh, any other council reports not listed on the agenda? I have a few city council committee reports, but due to the time, I'm going to move on. Item number twenty-three, city council report. Anyone? Oh, Vice Mayor.
I know it's been a while, but I wanted to talk about the Make a Difference Day that happened and occurred. I just want to congratulate city staff for working with the community around really providing the space for our community to give back. I think it was extremely successful, and to see people out there cleaning up the streets, especially in top-of-the-hill area, that was really nice. And you saw a lot of families and young people get together. So that was such a beautiful moment, and it was great. There were so many projects everywhere. You know, as mentioned earlier, they're giving out compost, but it's just really nice to see the city get together and give back. Also, the Halloween costume at Ceremony, I saw the mayor and his cute little grandchild there as well, and it was amazing to see the little ones. It was packed and filled. I knew there were a lot of Daily City community members there, and it's always such a great sight to see all the little ones all dressed up. Also, you know, our Assembly Member Phil Ting had a coffee hour at the Doldriss Senior Center. I was there with also our council member, Ray Buena Ventura, our mayor, our planning commissioner, Pamela De Giovanni, and it was just great to just interact and really talk about the issues in the community and have some time with our Assembly Member, who we need to work with, especially he's there representing our district. And also, something that I was really proud to be at, and our mayor was one of the guest speakers, was the grand opening of MidPen. And I know that the council, you know, I wasn't on here yet, but that was something of foresight and really to ensure that we have affordable housing in our city. And it was just a great experience to see the residents, see the homes, and really how the architecture of that building, so close to transit. And so that was just, that was really something special. And as mentioned earlier, Policita's ribbon cutting, I think there's been a lot of good, positive community events, and to see the renovation of that middle school is huge. I did not go there, but I did go there for sporting events when I was a cheerleader for Ben Franklin. So to see it really come to fruition and have so much innovation, a safer place for young people, and really get ready for the 21st century and beyond is huge. And last but not least, I'd like to say Happy Veterans' Day to all the veterans here present and to the ones out in watching out there. Happy Veterans' Day for your service. And also like to acknowledge the Filipino World War II veterans who recently received the Congressional Gold Medal and their service of, till this day, they still have not received the equal benefits that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any, wow. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I guess Vice Mayor really keeps tabs of everything, and I really don't have to make a comment, so I'll just make a comment based upon what she has said. She's very humble in the fact that she was one of the judges for the Halloween event sponsored at Ceremony, and Vice Mayor is one of the judges. I did want to bring up Peninsula Clean Energy, to which I sit on that committee, and I'm very proud of Daily City. I believe the opt-out rate for Daily City is 2.7% out of all the households we have in Daily City, 2.7. And when the committee first started, they were anticipating over 5%.
Yeah.
So that's excellent. TR Policita, Vice Mayor says she didn't go there, but I live across the street and have been across the street from them for 20 years. While my kids went to TR Policita, and for over 20 years, I've been dealing with that double parking traffic that makes it hard for me to get out of my driveway. And since the opening of the new park, not only do they have solar, but they've put two EV charging stations there. And as I'm going down the street, I look over to my left, and it says, please feel free to use our free to use our drop-off point. No more traffic." So it's all good. So with that being said, I have no further. Ms. Christensen, you have anything else for the city council part?
No.
Thank you so much. Okay, next item is staff. Does staff have anything for us?
Not this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Martel. I would like to adjourn our meeting tonight in honor of three people. One is Ms. Betty Ing. Her daughter works at AAA here in Daly City and have really been a great donor to the community and supporting Daly City in various events. Mr. Herb Lee, he was the first Chinese officer in the San Francisco Police Department and was subsequently a mentor for other police officers to come, but he blazed the path for not only Asian police officers, but all officers of color and women in the San Francisco Police Department. He passed away. And lastly, on behalf of Mike Gangona, Mr. John Serrano out of Pacifica. So if we can, and let's not forget our veterans who served. This past Saturday was Veterans' Day, and there's folks all over the place, and we just need to always think of them, and our condolences for all that have perished, no matter what the peril. So if we can pause for a moment of silence, I would appreciate it, please. Thank you so much. This meeting is now adjourned.